How are you? How are you? How are you? How's everything?
Hello.
It's the Cantor. How's it going?
I started to say good morning. It's what, 5:37 in the evening? So good evening, Sandra. Good to see you. And everyone, of course, that'll be joining us. I want to thank you for your time today and for having me on.
Yes. No, thank you for coming on. Thank you for coming on. You know, like this is this is election year 2024. A whole lot of races are up and you know, folks are gonna be running. Oh, I didn't say my name. Sandra Sheffler, host of Race and Races. You guys should know that by now. I've been at this for about two years. Doing candidate interviews for more like four, but on a Race and Races platform for about two years. And so we try to, you know, get the candidates to come in, give them some one-on-one time. So they can tell you about what it is that they want to do, why they're running for office, what is their vision for the position that they that they want to hold? And so this is their time and we're gonna give them an opportunity to do that this afternoon, this evening. What I have for you is his name is gonna be John Christopher Cantor on the ballot.
I'll tell you about that in a minute.
More popularly known as Chris Cantor. So just in case y'all get there and start voting and be like, who is this John dude? It is Chris Cantor and he will explain what all of that is about, right? So he's gonna be on the ballot for school board, seat one. He's one of the few, I think, you know, I think he might be the only one that has a folks running against him now. He'll clear that all up. I don't know if some of the other, I think the other ones so far have gone unopposed. However, I think it's until about maybe like June 17th or something like that. That people can decide whether or not they're gonna throw their hat in the race and the other seats that are up, which I think is two, three, five. In one of the at-large seats, right? So it's one, two, three, five, in the one of the at-large seats, right? One, two, three, yep, five in the at-large seat. Yeah, cuz there are five seats that are up during this 2024 cycle. So, um, so that's it. So I'm gonna give you, I'm getting Chris Cantor a chance to introduce himself to you all. So those of you who are already on, please share, share the interview. Subscribe to the page, not only on Facebook, but we also have a YouTube channel. Please go ahead and subscribe to the page, leave some comments, like the videos cuz you know, then it did more and more folks get to see it. So go ahead and go ahead and share the video, like the page on both Facebook and YouTube and subscribe to the channel. All right, that's my intro stuff. Go ahead, Chris.
Hey Sandra, so, so good to see you. I don't know if people know this, however, you and I serve on a board together.
We do, which one?
Well, the Grand United PTA, right? So I wanted to be sure that everyone knows cuz this is so cool. We, and actually, it was at the behest of Aretha Wimberly and her grandmother's group. Mostly in District Five, although you don't have to live in District Five, which is a Lauderdale Fort Lauderdale-ish area, right?
Plantation, I think is a part of it, plantation and maybe Sunrise?
I think so. I'd have to look at the map. I'm not that familiar with with what that what that looks like. But the grandmas there started this really cool community PTA that there was that the from grandma's, grandma, how you doing, right? And Sandra serves on their board. I serve on their board. It's gonna be a great group of women, men, not just grandmothers, that are coming together to serve a multitude of schools in that area and to really increase parent engagement. So that's it. So exciting. So good to see that and good to see Sandra here as well and one of our many work lives, right?
Right. And that is exciting because this is actually an idea that came up about maybe two months ago, right? There was a meeting at the African-American Research Library. They talked about it like two months ago and within two months with the help of Chris. In the PTA Association, they were able to assist, you know, get all the paperwork together. It's a 501(c)(3) and we're, you know, and I'm also, we have to give a shout out to school board member Debbie Hickson for help and put it up together. And also Jeff Holness, who is the District Five School Board Member, he has a part to play in this. But definitely Debbie Hickson was the one she had put that meeting together, put the pieces together, had folks come. And here it is, you know, two months later, is a PTA in District Five.
Yeah. And so what I'm so excited about there is that it's, it's very, it's a new thing in Broward, right? It's not connected to one school. It's a community PTA. It's the first of its kind, I think, that really began by grandmothers. So we're looking forward to that and I can't wait in a few months, a few weeks to really share all the great news there. I know that we're not here to talk about that.
Yeah, we're not. Yeah, there's some things that they're trying to do and I think it's like only $5 to join. So you guys should look into that. It's like $5 to join and you get to do some great works for a great community.
Grand United PTA. So do, do be sure to join us. However, I know I'm supposed to talk about myself, so I'll get started there. As you, just a few things, for those that don't know me, yes, my name is going to be John Christopher Cantor on the ballot. I'm trying to make sure it says Chris Cantor. However, I am not in the Witness Protection Program. For those people that always ask, my mother, a little bit of a sad story, but it's, it's actually quite comical now that I've gotten older. My father's name was John. My, my mother named me Christopher and was gonna call me John. Long story short, he passed while she was still carrying me and she couldn't call me John, so she called me Chris, right? So my whole life, if I've wanted to avoid any phone calls and they ask for John, I've just said, he's not here. No, it was for me. I'm kidding. But it's kind of one of those things where I've always gone by my middle name, right? So then we had our baby boy. We said, we'll never do that to him. And I did the exact same thing. His name is John Cohen and we call him Cohen. I know the things never say never, right?
Okay, so, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna trade stories right now, right? So my son actually goes by his middle name, right? And I actually never really told him his first name cuz I never called him by his first name cuz he's also named after his dad. And so I never called him by his first name. So he goes into this, uh, he was like pre-K four, one of the classes. And you know, at that point, they're preparing it for kindergarten, so they gotta tell them their real name, even though, you know, you tell them, this is the name you're gonna call him by, right? He comes home one day and he tells me that the lady told him what his first, she said, my name is, and I'm not even gonna say it, but he said his first name. And I'm like, why does she do that? He's like, well, she's, and I went to the school, like, why did you tell him that was his name? She was like, no, we have to prepare from kindergarten and that's the name they're gonna call him by. So I am guilty of the same thing. My son goes by his middle name and most people think that's his first name, but it's not.
You do what you gotta do, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's been, to clear that up, so people know that it will either be John Christopher or Chris, but I am the same person. My wife and I and our kids have now, my son has only lived in here in Broward and my daughter, we knew to her when she was, I think, six in 2015. I've been an educator for, my goodness, 20 years now, right? So I started as a high school teacher, then became within a, I guess about six, seven years, an assistant principal. Then a principal, worked my way into, into district level administration. And I now am very happy to serve with the School District of Palm Beach County. Luckily, it's not too far of a drive, right? Things aren't, aren't, aren't too, too distant at that time in the morning and the train works great. But I'm able to serve in the Title I Department. And those people that don't know, Title I serves our neediest of children. They serve the most marginalized students that are either facing a multitude of issues, whether it is they're economically disadvantaged. They come from homes that where the family might be homeless. And the definition of homelessness, by the way, doesn't always mean you don't have a roof. Like two families living in one, one home could be considered homeless, right? And so really doing the best we can to make sure that we are giving every single student an opportunity. And an opportunity to learn and to grow themselves. And so that's been my life's work. I was a news anchor before I started all of that and thought, oh, I'll be cool and famous. And then just realized this wasn't what was making me happy. And through ironically coaching cheerleading, I had been a cheerleader and then realized, you know what? So I love this. This is what I want to do with my life. And every single day has been world birthday since then. Love working with, with kids and with our community. And as a parent, things have changed, right? So in 2015, my wife and I moved here to Broward. We moved right into Hollywood originally and then we've either lived in Hollywood or .7 miles outside of Hollywood the whole time we've been here, right in this area. And I've served in many roles as from PTA President, Treasurer at the school level, to also now Vice President of Leadership for the County Council PTA. And I will say, just to be clear, so we're all good, PTA doesn't endorse, right? They're, they're not backing any candidates. So I'm not speaking on their behalf when I say that, but just kind of letting you know the experience, right? And so that's given me the opportunity to serve on our District Advisory Committee, our Facilities Task Force. The committee that helped interview the superintendent, really had a lot of great opportunities there. But the number one thing of all things that has prepared me for running has been my kids, right? So I, I'm a little embarrassed to say this, but the truth is, when I was an administrator, a young administrator, I remember being the one that would say, listen, I get it, you know, you've got concerns about your child. We have 700 kids. I have to worry about the other 699. All of a sudden, I had a kid and it was like, wait a minute, it's not that I don't care about the other 699, but I want to know, what are you doing with my kid, right? So, oh, Aretha, I'm sorry, we stole Aretha's fund. Well, we'll, we'll take care of that. Announcing that in a press release, I just noticed her chat. But I think that one thing that has really been missing is that piece of helping parents not just be a part of the education system, right? But also training parent, like, listen, my kid comes home with math and I'm a teacher and I look at it and go, wait, what, what are you doing? She said something the other day about, oh, let's build an array. And I thought we were building a pyramid. So I was like, okay, well, let me get some construction paper. But it was something with math, right? We, we have to, as parents, be trained and, and know how to support them better. And that's one of my ultimate goals. I say all that to say.
Okay, so on that note, Chris, like, okay, I'm a, I'm a older mom.
I'm giving you a lot.
I'm an older mama. I went to school, I went to like elementary, middle, high school a very long time ago, right? And they're, they're doing some new math stuff and all of these things. I wanna know how to do all that. Cuz my brain is on some other stuff. I'm working too much, you know what I'm saying? You know, being the island person that I am, I got my hands in a whole bunch of different pots.
Right.
The school, so I, I hear what you're saying and I know we want to empower parents in some way, but I don't know if we want to put, give parents the responsibility of trying to help with some of these math assignments, okay?
So I think one thing that we, we often struggle in our home, right, is we want to help with homework. We well want to do all the work for her, right? We want to help. And I think that sometimes it's very difficult to not know, like, it, things are so different. It's a whole new math, right? It's like a whole new language. And trying to be able to help her with that, I think there are times when I just am thinking, I just would at least like to understand the principle a little bit better because we used to just write numbers, remember, and carry to the top and we were done. Now they're drawing full-scale pictures, you know, and, and things that are helping their learning supposedly right there with that. I think that what that says to me as a leader is, we just have to get back to a place of instruction and have good instruction so that kids understand what they're learning and aren't just going through rote procedures, right? And aren't just doing something to just do it and then come home and it doesn't make sense and none of us know how to help. When they really understand, I think that they'll really start grasping some of those concepts, right? So.
Yeah, I agree with that. So yeah, give parents more tools. I, I, I don't wanna have to do geometry ever again.
Listen, that and, and what was the class I took, it was called, it was pre-calculus, whatever the class was pre-calculus, maybe it was called pre-cal. We had vectors and I was like, I, and I've never used it since. And I hate to say that, but it's true. I didn't go into a science background. And I struggled, right? So I think that getting back to being able to have usable things, especially as parents, right? That we can say, look, Johnny had two apples. He gave Susan one. How many do you have left? I can do that. That's easy, right? I got you. But when we start on these other principles, it becomes a matter of where I'm really relying on the teacher and saying, hey, help me out. Because I'm even at 47 years old, still learning math. It's, it's just never stopped, right? Cuz the kiddos have added to that. So, yeah. I'm trying to think what else to say. There's a lot to say.
Yeah, no, so you did great. You got a good intro. Tell us that you're, you're telling us that you're in Palm Beach. And so the reason why you're running is because you have school, I'm children in the school system or is there some other reason that made you decide, you know what? I'm gonna run for school board at this time in my life.
Such a great question. So I, just so you know, I grew, I'm a public school product, right? I grew up in a metro Atlanta. You can probably see the G behind me for Georgia, right?
You know, I was trying to not say nothing about that cuz you're talking to, for, to a member of Gator Nation.
I know what topic it is.
So I, I, I was like, I think you did that on purpose.
No, actually, it's just one of the things on my office, but I'll never miss a chance to brag on them. But I will say, so grew up going to public school and, and learned a lot and had a great experience. It, it really made me who I am today. But I also grew up in a family where, I mean, we were poor. Like I hate to say it that way, but it's the truth. We, if we had two pennies to rub together, we were lucky. And looking at that and the students that I serve, I just have a heart to say, I don't want to see any student, regardless of their zip code, regardless of their income, regardless of their family makeup, miss out on the great things that we have for them, right? And so that's why, one of the reasons why I'm running. I will tell you personally, a few years ago, we ran into an issue and it involved my daughter. It was nothing too major. It was kind of a structural thing and I never could get answers. And I was a little underwhelmed by the responses I got. And that's when I started thinking, you know what? I have the experience as an educator. I have the experience in budgeting. Why not run for school board? And I had run before, right? Did not know what I was doing when I run before. People can ask me, you know, that on that later. But I, this run, I'm ready to really do that work. And I feel like I know as a administrator and as a parent, exactly what the needs are. But more than that, I have the voice and the platforms to have been able to be out in my community, talking to parents, teachers, community members, to find out what we all want collectively. And being part of the community and part of those conversations is what has driven me to be here. Because if, as you know, Sandra, a lot of people don't always know how to engage with the school board. They don't know how to engage with the school district. And I think the more that we open those doors and help them, the more rewarding it becomes. But it also helps ensure that we're getting education that our community wants into the hands and minds of our young people.
But, but one of the problems is that I, so I watch probably way more school board meetings than I should. I've gone in person before. That's, that's too much energy for me. So I just go, you know, I watch them. Even if a person wants to engage with the school board, if it's a, if it ends up being a topic that tends to be like popular, they only gonna give you one minute to talk about it, right? And on a good day, you get about three. And then maybe if somebody gives you some time, then you get to talk about it for six minutes. So if a person really want, and then, and then the other problem is that the meetings are on Tuesdays during the daytime where some folks gotta go to work, right? So it, it, some of it may be that, okay, folks don't know how to engage. But then there's another part of it is like, are they, is it really a board that's open to that type of community or parental engagement?
Yeah. And I wonder, so that's such a great question. I wonder, sometimes I don't think it's people not wanting to be engaged. I think it's the processes in place, right? So sometimes I think, you know, we have long board meetings. They've been long for, for a while, at least since pre-COVID. I remember, you know, we just ran into a lot of, a lot of unique needs in our communities. And, and you have to balance the need between time and the need between being able to have some public discourse. And so there's a process issue that sometimes comes up. How do we handle and mitigate that? I think the most important thing that we often forget is that really the board meeting isn't always the only platform for, for engagement. I think one of the best ways to actually be engaged are one-on-one conversations with your board members and those who are, who are there that are making decisions. I have found that when I just call my individual board member or those that I know that are involved, I get a lot of good information and a good ear that has the time to hear me, right? And so I think that it's the training there, but also trying to balance, there's so much work to do. But there's also the work of the, of the voice that we want to get from the community. That's a hard balance. And I don't know the answer cuz if we have 40 minutes, we might be there forever with additional more topics, right? I don't know. And I'm not in that seat, so it's very hard to make that judgment call. I would say that I think that where we really, the rubber meets the road are in those one-on-one relationships with board members and with our policymakers and really trying to develop those.
Yeah. And yeah, and that's, that's an interesting thing cuz I've actually had folks that needed to find out information from some of the board members. They've reached out and I'm not, I ain't gonna call no names. I'm not gonna do that anymore. So you know, you, that you reach out to, cuz you can really speak to any of the board, you know, any of them, right? And some of them are really good about responding, like really good, like their assistant's gonna call you back, set up a time. And then some of them, it's like, you don't know where that email went, right? Like that thing just went somewhere in space and no one ever gets back to you, right? You know, and then again, I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I'm not gonna call anybody else out today, but that's part of the problem, right? So like, I, I ask, you know, we, we're hoping that, you know, there's a question in the chat that I'm gonna ask you in a minute. But you know, that's one of the things is like, some of them are available and they'll find the time to talk to you and the rest of them are there and they just don't. And you know, when they, they, they just don't. That's, they, they just don't. That's it.
And I, you know, I, I will say to that, cuz I think this is, this is, that's a fair assessment, right? I think when you serve in public, the public, you've been given, you have been given a responsibility, right? But I also think that sometimes we have to also think about, I remember when I was a first-year teacher, right? I didn't always know exactly what to do. And luckily, there were modeled teachers in the building to help me. I don't know that when you're in a seat such as a school board, even a commission, I don't know, I've never served in a commission, but that you always have a model there to say, here are the things not to forget and to kind of help that learning curve. So I think that there's also that level could be there, right? I think, however, if we as leaders just always make sure we put the kids and our community first, we're gonna be led the right way. And I think that it's really important, Sandra, you call me to say, hey, I mean, and you and I are like this now, right? Hey, let me call you back. I'm, I'm busy at a meeting, but I will get back to you. To even have a hard conversation if we need to and know that the hard conversation is not personal, it's not an attack. It's trying to attack a hard issue that's in front of us.
Right. So Mr. Steve Moyer wants to know, he says, what is your assessment of the current state of Broward County Public Schools?
Wow, that's a little, it's not difficult. It, it, there's a lot to encompass, but I'll kind of narrow it down here. I, so as an educator, I'm concerned and as a parent, I'm concerned with the fact, pardon me, my contacts started slipping and so you're gonna see me move it. I am concerned with the fact that we are seeing a school, a district level grade of a B minus across the board, right? And you know, I'll, I'll talk a little about, you know, kind of some parameters there. But in my own community, right, right here in District One, we have one school that was an A and we would have expected it to be. We have a charter school that was an A as well. We have several schools that were Bs, Cs, and Ds. Now, I'll talk about the grading system or the way that we're grading schools here in a minute. But my concern is the tests that we're, we were using were only based upon this year on performance. No learning gains were included because we didn't have a metric to, to compare them to. What that tells me across the board is if we're a B minus, that our students really are not on grade level as a whole, right? And if we know that by looking around. So my number one concern is we have to get back to focusing on instruction and folk, making sure that every single student is on grade level. If a student does not read on grade level by the end of grade three, they are 10 times more likely to drop out of high school than their peers. And that sets them up for other ramifications later in life, other, other, you know, nuances that, that really are problematic and that are unfair. Had we helped them to get to a point of reading, they might not have had that future.
Yeah, but once we know that, once we know that, there's, you can, you can, you can try to fix that, right?
Absolutely.
Instead of, cuz you know, one of the things I hear, cuz I do stuff in the criminal justice space, right? And so one of the things they talk about is like, yeah, they build jail space based on third grade test scores, right? I'm like, what kind of society is that? Like if you already know when this kid is eight or nine years old, that they're on a path that's gonna lead them, lead them to jail or prison, why are you making space as opposed to using that money to implement, you know, maybe add some tutoring or really teaching them how to read or fill in the gap and all of those types of things? So that's like, uh, I, I, I don't know, that problem belongs to a whole bunch of folks, right? Maybe not just the school system, the legislators, the people who are thinking that that's a good idea, that you create jail space instead of programs that will get people to the point where they can just read, you know? And then you may not, you know, cuz that, that, that kid you creating that jail space might be the one that victimize you in the future.
Well, it comes down to.
That kind of consideration is very interesting to me.
How do we fund as a society, right, to all of our programs, right? So if we're really thinking through preventative funding and like, what can we do to increase the third grade reading levels, right? Now, I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm, I'm taken back by those because I would love to see us at an A without learning gains. What that means is if we have to get to an A with learning gains, that we're actually focusing upon their ability to learn stuff they missed, but not actually meet the mark in order to get an A, if that will, if that makes some sense there. So it, it's very, it's concerning to me that we can get to an A, but our kids still won't be on grade level with an A. To me, that's not acceptable that any child is not on grade level and is not learning where they need to be learning. There's a lot of factors there, right? And I'm not blaming anyone. It just means we have to face it. However, I will also say, the caveat there is, we were promised a few years back when testing changed, that we would be doing less testing than before, once the FSA went away, right? But now with progress monitoring, we're doing almost three times as much testing as we were then, right? That takes away from instruction. It puts a huge emphasis on testing and on accountability. That's only required of traditional and charter public schools. And it just places the focus upon testing rather than on real teaching and learning. You know, I want to know, I want my daughter to pass tests, but when she leaves third grade, I want her to be able to read a story and to be able to get some real critical concepts out of it and to think critically, right? Not just be able to tell you what was the plot, who was the main character, like those are great things. But when you go get a job at IBM or wherever, they're not gonna say, I'd like you to read this. Can you tell me who the main character was, right? They're gonna want you.
Situation, yeah.
Absolutely. And we gotta get back to that. And I think that, you know, testing unfortunately is part of the reality of where we are. And our kids are going to have to pass tests in order for accountability to work. And there are all kinds of things in there. We get extra points for like acceleration. But when the rubber meets the road, it comes down to, are our kids learning? And I think that, to answer Mr. Moyer's question, we still have a lot of work to do. But I don't think that work should fall solely on the back of teachers. I think that we need to really think through how we're structured to support the whole child so that we're ensuring that everything we do is, pardon me, earmarking or backing up learning for them, right? And not just kind of setting them out and hoping for the best.
Okay, so your short answer to what is your assessment of the current state, state of Broward County's schools is what?
We got work to do. We, we got, we've got work to do. Our kids are not learning where they need to be learning and, and we have work to do and a lot of distraction.
Okay. And it's not just the teachers. It's gonna be a whole, so how, how do you get there? Fire everybody? Get rid of half of them? What do you do?
So I don't think, I don't think firing is, is always the answer. Now, you know, let, let's, let's be real.
What do you mean, when you say firing nobody? I mean, maybe not firing everybody, but somebody's gotta get fired?
It depends, right? Sorry, I'm grabbing water at the same time. I think that we have to really make those questions based on individual performance and the performance of the individuals we're looking at. Just to say, let's fire somebody. To me, that's sort of a red herring, right? Let's ensure that the people we have are effective. What are, what, how are we assessing what they're doing? Does it, does it show effectiveness? And have we given them a chance to grow and to learn that role without just kind of giving up, right? So I think that there's a lot to be done. We need to rethink about the way we do things. For example, I don't know if you know this, but our counselors in our school buildings, a lot of them are actually handling standardized testing throughout the day. Like they serve as an assistant test administrator or test administrator. But what happens when a crisis is going on with a student? Well, they're in testing. That student's crisis has to wait or be handled by someone not trained to handle it, right? We have to really rethink how we are assigning duties, what things look like and what the support for those students is. One of the best things we've ever done is free breakfast because research shows when students eat breakfast, they're prepared for learning. But I think that we've got to rethink the structure of who's responsible and not just teachers are where the rubber meets the road, I'm gonna say it. But they cannot be the only person responsible for that student's learning. There has to be a strong structure in place.
Okay, so that free breakfast stuff, that's a ease, that's easy. Like, you know, I'm not saying that that's not a thing, but child, please. People be like, I would rather you make sure my kid could read when they get out of third grade than you making sure they get like some milk or cold cereal that they won't necessarily eat. So, you know, to me, when you said free breakfast, that reminded me of them adding the Black National Anthem to the NFL in response to what happened in 2020. Like, ain't nobody asked you to do all that, right?
Right. And I'm not saying free breakfast is the answer.
I'm not trying to be dismissive. However, like if you're talking about like 15 different things that could have been done to solve this problem, that was probably number 14 or 15 of the list of things that really should be done to solve that problem. So I don't know how much I feel, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna say that. But again, you know, we're really here to hear about all of the things and I appreciate that you're not only putting the responsibility of what needs to be done on the public school teachers. The other thing I want to add to is that, you know, people are always scared to say that some people should lose their job. And I think we gotta be a little bit more comfortable with like, you know, some people just can't be here. And it's, it's not, and it may be, some, some of it may be them or they just may not be what's needed to do what's best for children. And we have to not be afraid of that, right? We have to not be afraid of taking people out of the system that's not necessarily there for what our ultimate product is, is to get, you know, graduate great stu, get good students that can read and that can go on and do whatever it is that they want to go ahead and do with their life. So this whole idea to be scared to say that somebody need to lose their job, I, I'm, I'm not that person. So some of them do. Some of them, some of them absolutely do.
I would never say no one does. And if you're looking at me right now, my contact keeps flipping. I'm sorry. So I keep rubbing it.
No, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
No, you're, you're fine. I would say, again, Um, I would say, again, we have to make sure that we are doing best, what's best by the individual. Listen, I, one time when I was a teacher, I had a student teacher that, um, she, it was, this wasn't the fit for her. And I was a, a teacher of record, you know, and I told her, look, I just don't think this is the right fit for you. And she was a student teacher, but she didn't show the passion, didn't show the compassion and the things that really are vital characteristics of teachers, right? And at some point, we have to be very honest with people to say, this probably isn't the best job, where this probably isn't fitting for you. Not just for you, but because of the impact that it's having on students. Um, I had a superintendent one time say, and I, you know, I, um, I understood where it was coming from and I thought, well, that's a good point, that students did not exist to provide adults jobs. Students existed because they needed to learn. And I think that that is important for us to come back and say, you know, it's great that I have a job. I love my job and I love what I do, but my job isn't here to serve me, my job is to serve those children.
Exactly. All right. So, you know, there's some, there's some hot questions in the.
I see, yeah.
I, I think I might, I might just let you answer them hot questions like a little bit later and some of them might kind of just come out in, in our conversation. But one of the things that, you know, I want to ask you about is that what type of changes do you want to see on the board? Right? Because some of the problems that we're facing is because of the makeup of the board. I mean, it's probably changed like maybe four or five times in the last like three or four years or something like that for one reason or another, right? So there's been a lot of change, but what type of changes would you like, would you want to see on the board?
So I think one thing, um, to answer that question, um, in, in a, in a very circumspect kind of way, if that makes sense. I really feel like I, I would like to see a board that worked harder to build consensus rather than to be, like, I just have seen a lot of division over the past few years, right? And granted, I get why, right? We've had a board that was, um, the some members were taken out. We have then what was called the Reform Board by many, and now we have, um, a new board after the last elections. There's just a lot of pieces there that I would like to see, uh, just a lot more consensus building, right? But what I really would like to see, um, happen on the board is, A, um, some more business acumen come to that board, right? We're going to have to make very, very, very difficult decisions about finances this year. When we look at whether or not schools will close, right? They're going to be looking at that soon and what the process and procedures are. And we're still waiting, you know, to hear that information. But to have that budgetary experience, which I bring from handling $23 million in, in federal funds. But also, I would like to see a, the culture between staff and district change a little. Like, I think that sometimes I've noticed, and I could be wrong, but I've noticed times when it feels like there's a push and pull between staff and the board where maybe a question isn't fully answered and ready, or maybe we have to wait on that information. And I get some of it's just the way boards are structured. But there's a lag time sometimes in the work, right? And so, um, like I can tell you, if we have the ability to pull up information on the computer right then while a board member is asking and answering it, we need to be doing that. We need to be doing everything to make the decision that's going to be made urgent and move with a sense of urgency. And I think that's one thing that we can't lay at any one person's feet. It's a cultural issue we have to all lean into and attack together, um, of the work we do is important and we need to be doing it with a sense of urgency. Um, and those are the two big things.
Okay, so I'm going to say something and this isn't really for you to answer or anything, but.
Okay.
I don't think they want to pull that information, right? Because half the time they're having these board meetings, they have all of this staff here and, you know, they have the agenda, they know what it is that they're going to talk about. And if that's the job you do, you're supposed to know what it is that you're supposed to bring. So when they sit there and they ask them like, well, can you, oh, I don't have those numbers with me, I will have to, well, I'm like, what you mean? What did you think you came here to do, right? So that, that's a huge problem and that's the type of thing that I don't think should be acceptable, right? However, it's accepted time and time and time again. They'll have a meeting three months later, okay, we're going to come back and revisit it, blah, blah, blah. When they come back, I, if the, if the person's there, they don't have the information or they had a vacation that was scheduled that they had to go to and they can't come to the board meeting. I'm like, listen, the job, I mean, you know how many times there are things that I was, I wanted to go do, but I couldn't go do because I have certain responsibilities either as, you know, a, a person with a business, an employee, a parent. So you don't always get to go do the things you want to do when you have other more pressing issues that's on hand. So again, I'm not, I'm not asking if you can respond to that, but I think part of the issue is that I, it has to be intentional because you can't always not have the information all the time and you know that's what you came here to talk about, so.
Yeah, and I don't, I can't really comment on whether it's intentional or not because I don't know, but I will say.
And I'm not asking you to, yeah.
I will say this, if we, we can refocus the, the energy and the climate to, this is an urgent decision and we need to move with urgency and quickness. You know, with, with good quickness, not just quickness to make a decision, but with real good decisions. We would be getting some answers immediately that we need. And I feel like sometimes, uh, there's a, just a, a disconnect in that feeling of, oh, well, we've got another meeting coming up. We'll get back to you. And, um, you know, I've seen in my own job, there are times where you have to run out of the boardroom and get information and hurry and bring it back as soon as you can because that's the time that the decision's being made and you need to hurry to have the best information. That's not always the case, but I just think it's a, it's a mindset, kind of a growth mindset that if we could get toward, we could really transform, uh, the work that our district does.
Yeah, if people come to the meetings prepared, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, so what can be done to address the educational losses from the pandemic? Do you think the students have recovered?
I absolutely do not think they've recovered. Um, I look at my, my own child who, um, she's on grade level, but she should be based upon her abilities. She should be above grade level, right? I think that we, we've got to do a number of things. First of all, I think we do have to look at our, at our funding structure. I look at our, um, pardon me, our salaries, right? Um, we have to be ensuring that every single group of employees is paid equitably and fairly and what they're worth, right? It's sad that here in Hollywood, and I can't speak to everyone's area, you know, I can definitely speak to where I live in District One, 51% of our community, including myself, are renters, right? And rent, if, in case you haven't rented lately, it's like three, four, $5,000, right? If, if a teacher and my, I'm a teacher or a administrator, my wife is an administrator, we struggle to pay that rent. Can you imagine what a family of two teachers or a family of only one teacher goes through in order to pay their living expenses? They're not going to come to work, and I mean this like caringly, they're not going to come to work with the, the only thing on their mind being, I want to, to help kids, right? They've got all kinds of stresses and things they're carrying with them, so we have to really focus there.
Right, because they have to move back home with their parents, because you can't pay it. The numbers don't add up, like them, they, they went back home to their mama or something or they, they had to go get a roommate, uh, something, there's, there's no way. It's, it's not the numbers, the math don't math at all, probably gave up their cars or whatever, but you know. Or their 99% of their credit is in use, because you know, it's, it's, it's not.
I'm there.
It's not happening, you know?
I'm not crying because of the credit, it's like it's contact rubbing my. No, but listen, so that's important, right? That's, that's really huge. But I think we also have to, we have to get back to, it really matters that these kids have every experience they can to learn. And we, we're doing a lot of whole group classroom instruction, that's important. But we need to find out, how can we target groups of students that maybe this group is struggling in this math concept and this group is struggling with this one? How can we structure curriculum inside the classroom that they're working on what their weaknesses are, not their strengths? Like, we have way too many people that are, uh, or way too many students that we have them repeating stuff they already know. If they know it, they know it, there's no need to continue to relearn it, they've mastered it. Let's focus on what they haven't mastered, so that's the other thing. Um, and I think finally, you know, we've got to just get to a place where we are real with students and we're using technologies that make sense. Like, I went into my daughter's, um, my daughter's portal the other day and there was so much, I didn't even know where to get started, right? I mean, there was just a lot. Now, I'm for tools and resources. I think that having tools and resources such as an online learning platform is helpful, but we need to also help them to be able to make the choices, right? That are going to move them forward in their learning. But I think we have to be able to speak their language, so to speak. My two-year-old can take this cell phone right here and can, can use it like I can't, right? At least two. So we have students that, um, are technology native and we have to be able to leverage the technology and new ways of thinking to help them. Now, if I ask a teacher in her classroom to do that tomorrow, that's not fair because I haven't trained them in that technology. We have to really focus on innovation. Um, and that's kind of a dirty buzzword these days. But I really think if we focus on how can we transform what we're doing, but provide the support and the, the, the backbones and the, uh, the underpinnings to help every teacher and every person in that building who affects instruction, we can get there. But we've got a lot of work to do and I think that the morale, I'll tell you, has kind of come low after COVID because we went through a, like a hundred-year event, if even that, a major, major event. We've got to try to transform that so that we all feel extremely positive about what we're doing and we don't feel overwhelmed. I think those are the number one.
It is a woman, because my, like you said, went into my daughter's portal and I'm looking at this stuff and I'm just like, what is all, it's just so much stuff, right? And my daughter, she'm already, even though she's mainstreaming classes, I'm like, how, you, you, and, and this is one of the problems that I have is that I think teachers really teach to the middle. So if you're a really smart student, you're in a class board and if you're a student that don't know, they're going to be like, find a way to catch up, get your D, leave my class, right? Then they're just always teaching to the middle. So the fact that I have a child that's on a spectrum, that she has to basically maneuver this canva the same way anybody else is like, um, I'm just like, are you folks serious, right? And, and you know, and I, and I even was like, well, why don't you make some sort of accom, they do some accommodations, right? And they're like, well, we have students who don't have diagnosis that graduate high school and can't read. Someone actually told me this, I was like, you proud of that? Like, you, you really going to say that? And they're like, yeah, we have students that don't have no diagnosis, mainstream, they get through, graduate, whatever, get their diploma and they can barely read and that's just kind of the nature of the beast. And I'm like, wow, right?
If that happens, we have failed that student and their whole family, right? So I think that, um, you know, and I will say for me, a teacher, you know, we sometimes underestimate, if you have 32 kids in your classroom, it's very hard to manage three or four different activities and groups at once, right? I, I'll never, ever tell a teacher, you know, it's easy, it's hard, it's, it's hard work. Um, and I think it does make sense to often kind of, um, in your mind of planning, like, and say focused, when you're kind of focusing toward the middle, at least you're moving something, right? But I do agree, it's just the way that teaching is these days, that it's, if we only say with one group, we're losing, and I'll say, let's say we have three levels, those other two levels. But is it fair, here's a question I would ask, to throw a teacher in a room with 32 other, with 32 children with no support and say, it's your job now to make sure they each have three different curricula at three different times, learning three different things? Probably not, and I'm not making an excuse there. I just think we have to think through, how can we structure their classes, right? So that that can occur.
So the little pushback that I'm going to give on that is that, you know, back in the day, right? Teachers used to have students from first grade to 12th grade all in the same class and they all managed to get out of that room, okay? So you're dealing with people that at least are in the same grade, they might be on different levels. But if you're a teacher for real, you should be able to manage a group of students that are relatively in the same space, one, you know, with maybe some, you know, standard deviation up and down in one direction. So I don't, um, my pushback to that is like, they should absolutely be able to do that. But can they do it because they got worried about all of this testing and all of these numbers and all of this other stuff?
Absolutely not.
That might be the true distraction, right? Not the fact that they cannot teach 30 students in a room that are a different level. It's probably all this other foolishness that they got them dealing with, right? And even just the technology, because someone posted that they, um, have all of these, they keep buying all this software, introducing it to the district, the, the teachers don't really know how to use it, don't want to use it, ain't going to use it, ain't got no time to use it, but they keep, you know, adding to their, you know, mobiles for something, right? So I think some of it is that. So can the teachers do it? I absolutely think they can and they should. Now, that may be where upper management becomes an issue is because they're making all of these requirements that take away from a teacher's ability to actually teach students in a room. So I don't think it's the 30 students that's the problem. I think it's all the other nonsense that they're being asked to do that has nothing to do with educating children.
And I can definitely respect that. I think that that's probably a very fair point. I think that we also have to think through, having been in the seat of, of an assistant principal who schedules kids too, right? Making sure that the groupings that we have in classes aren't so spread out that it's completely diametric, right? How do we make the groupings where they're at least within a certain bandwidth, maybe one standard deviation or two? That it helps that teacher to, to better focus. When they're three or four, and I, I'm talking research because I'm a researcher, three or four standard deviations apart, that's a lot, right? So if we can think about how we organize schedules so that we have kids together in manageable groups, that's what I'm talking about, right? How do we support that work to make the teachers' work, uh, more effective? And I think that you're exactly right. When we're asking them to teach, to be a social worker, to be mom and dad, to be, you know, the person who sews the button back on the shirt, like, you know, being a little facetious, but real, right? That's a lot. And how do you do all of that and still teach those 32 kids exactly where they need to be? That's a hard, uh, that's a hard concept that even the most, um, learned professionals are struggling with right now.
And one of the other questions on this, um, teach, this testing and teaching, um, do you think there's a better way for them to measure whether students are learning besides all of these standardized tests that they have them taking?
So such a great question because there's some new research. I, I would say it's probably about 2017, 2018 that I've been looking at where there are some states that are piloting, um, in certain districts, more performance portfolios of students. So instead of doing a standardized test in language arts, they are creating, um, a performance-based project where the teachers are all taught how to measure that by state standards. Um, and it involves working with communities, it involves, you know, go, getting out of the classroom and doing this work and actually applying it. And they are finding that once those students go and take this national test called the NATE, which I think is the National Association of Educational Performance, I think that's what it stands for, could be wrong. They are outperforming their standardized test peers, right? So I think we have to get to a, a format where we're assessing, and they're not testing, but assessing real knowledge and what they really can do. What we're, what we've been so busy focused on is what, what have they memorized? But we need to actually be assessing what can they do with what they've learned. And those schools and, and states that are doing that, they're showing huge gains. Um, and, right, it makes sense. Like, when my daughter leaves third grade, I don't want her to just tell me what the temperature on an oven can be. I want to know before she goes and makes a hot dog, which we've been down this road, that she actually knows how to do it. And all of that, I think we've lost in the middle, those higher level of thinking of, great, here's the knowledge, can you now construct something with that knowledge?
Right.
And we've seen some really good results in other states. I think Rhode Island is one of them and a few that are piloting programs like that.
Yeah, Rhode Island's always doing some stuff that's amazing.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm going to just say that, because we, we were talking about prohibition today in one of my classes and Rhode Island was like, I'm not signing off on this stuff. Rhode Island has already, you know, they, they just been leading a whole bunch of different things, right? And that small state don't get enough credit for all the things that they've done or plan to do and all of that, right? So Latricia has a question, so we're going to start transitioning into some other things. No, I don't want to keep you too long. I know it's baby boy's birthday and stuff like that, so you got to do something with him, right? All right, so she wants to know, um, her question is, are you able to deal with conflict resolution if elected with other board members? Some clearly, oh, she says some clearly have their own agenda, I said she did.
So I will say, Latricia, such a great question here and, um, you know, I've learned over the years. And I still, I'm still learning, right? Because there are some days, I'm going to be really real with you, where someone says something crazy to you and you look at them like, oh, if I could jump through this computer, you know, you're like, you, you're human, right? But I think what, especially as an educator, as an administrator, I've learned and gotten better at is being able to stop, think through the response, right? Write down what I'm hearing and then reflect back to that person, like, yes, so, um, here's what I'm hearing you say, let me clarify. And then work toward, if we can't get to conflict resolution at that day, how can we meet to talk about this, of course, without breaking rules, right? But how can we also find commonalities? Like, I think that some things have become so diametric that we are not finding the middle ground. And so I am able to do that. It's something that, um, I've worked at very hard, um, as a PTA leader and as a, um, as an administrator, right? It's so crucial, especially when you're a principal, right? So I remember, I'll give you a quick example. I remember being a principal and having a teacher and her parapro in kindergarten. We're literally arguing and fighting in class with each other, right?
They were throwing hands, Chris?
Nope, they didn't throw any hands, thank goodness, because I told them, I was like, look, keep hands, here are the rules, right? But they were having a major conflict, right? And so if they were the only group that actually had our students with disabilities that were in their, in their group, so there's nothing I could do, I couldn't like just move them quickly and solve it. So really sitting down and having meetings with each of them first to find out, let me get your point of view, what's her point of view? Now let's try to build some consensus and we did, what are the things we want to do together, right? Come to find out, the real issue was that the parapro didn't feel like she was being, um, heard and being recognized as a professional and the teacher was feeling overstepped. But once they sat down and started planning together and we worked through that, it was so cool because all of a sudden they both felt they had control and they changed things, right? That's just an example of, of me sitting down and saying, like, like, let's fix this, right? Because at the end of the day, there are way too many issues that have to be fixed and you and I, Sandra, can argue about them all day long and disagree, but our disagreeing isn't getting us anywhere, it's only creating a further chasm. And so we have to get to the place where we say, look, at some point, I'm going to have to give in a little. At some point, you're going to have to give in a little, let's find what the solution in the middle is. A, number, biggest point, that is best for children, right? And so that's, that's always my focus.
Okay, so you said, and I think you said you were in Palm Beach doing some stuff as an administrator dealing with Title I. So the seat that you're running for, I think they have like the most Title One schools in your area. Maybe they might be compete, compete, competing with District Five, not sure. How do you plan or can you, what, what do you, what are your plans on bringing some of the experience that you're having with that school district as being an administrator with Title One, um, as a board member, uh, for that area?
So this question is so clear to my, it's so dear to my heart, because number one, uh, over the past few years, and we talk about budgeting and people's eyes get glazed or like, I don't care, you know, like, it's it's crazy. However, when you realize the effect and impact that budgeting makes upon the decisions in a school building, by the way, intentional budgeting, I'm not talking, we're just gonna go and we thought we have money in the account, oh, yeah, let's buy that. Let's like, what is an intentional plan of budgeting makes a difference? And so when we don't have that intentionality, we miss out a lot. So, um, what I really think is vital is that we are looking at budgets together, not as here's the Title One budget, here's the S R budget, although S R is going away, here's operations, here's cap, all of that needs to be looked at together. So when you're building a program, like a tutorial program after school, a lot of those funds, even school, um, improvement grants, um, school supplemental improvement grants, all of that can go into building the tutorial and every fund takes a certain amount or certain part. But when we think about, oh, here's my Title One budget, here's my S I G budget, and we don't use them together, we have a real problem. And so I think that, not I think, pardon me, I know what I want to bring to the board, is that idea of let's use all of the funds together to not limit us, but to empower us to say, here's the share these funds are gonna take, right, and how that's going to work. Um, I also think that it's very important that, um, we understand how how the programs are working. We had a huge issue, not huge, uh, conversation, might be the word, about, um, including, uh, high schools and Title One, right? And how that's gonna work. Um, and no matter where we go, we have to understand our Title One dollars are finite, but the purpose is to increase learning in our most marginalized and underserved students. And we have to be able to assess that. So the thing I want to bring is, are we able to sit down and say, here's what our Title One dollars bought? What was the effect of of those funds? What was our return on investment? And when you really do good research that you can connect to assessment, you can measure if you were effective or not. And so those are the things that I want to bring is being able to really look at the numbers and and know good instruction and couple those so that we're moving the needle forward for the kids. It's not about how much money we spend, it's about, granted, we have to stay within budget lines, don't get me wrong, don't ever reuse that quote wrong. But what I'm saying is, are we using it effectively to impact our student learning? And that's the most important piece that, um, I want to be sure that I'm bringing to the table and doing every single day.
So I, so I, 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 I'm with you on what you're saying, but what I, what I, what it seems to be is, um, a lot of people don't understand budgets and they don't understand what, they don't understand it. So if you don't understand it, you gonna mess it up. You can make a whole bunch of money, but if you don't know how to budget it, you just go still be broke by the time Saturday come, you know what I mean?
And in Florida, you've got Florida Red Book rules, you've got, um, object codes, uh, program codes, all this stuff to know. And here's the thing about budgets, if you don't really get them sometimes. Um, and I'm not saying everyone should, not everyone's a business major, you know, that's why you have staff is to support and answer those questions too. But you don't always know where to look to make sure, have we really covered all our bases, right? Are we really doing our due diligence? Because you're not real certain how to compare budget to budget, profit and loss to your balance sheets, you know, all of that. I know those are administrative tasks in a lot of places, but I think what we have seen is budgeting is a huge uh, challenge and concern for us moving forward, right? And so we need to have people on that dais, um, and I would consider myself one of them, that are able to look at the fiduciary responsibility and say, yes, we're good, we're gonna be set, or no, we're not good, go back to the drawing table and fix this.
Right, because you're right, they do need to understand it, because the question that I usually hear is like, um, like, do we have that money in the bank or something like that, right? They always ask like, oh, is that what is the balance? I'm like, yo, the balance don't matter, you know what I'm saying? Like, you, you gotta think about, you, you, you might see that's the balance today, but some of that money might already be owed to somebody, right? So you just, and so they ask these questions, I'm like, that, that's, that's the absolutely the wrong, the wrong, wrong question. Because some of that money might have been spent years ago and it's just not, you just ain't gotta pay until now. So, yeah, so they definitely need to understand budget. And I think whoever, you know, gets there needs to be someone that can understand that and also have the ability to help their, well, I don't know.
Their peers.
Y'all can't really talk to each other outside of, you know, the meetings or whatever, but something needs to give, because it's clear that they don't understand that, you know, there's no bottomless pit of money, um, that you can't allocate the same money for four, five different things, because somebody not gonna get paid and it's going to be a problem. So I'll let you, you know, you, I think you had another point that you wanted to make on that, I'm letting you make that, and I have a few more questions that I want to ask.
I was just gonna say, it's, it's so crucial, right? When you're budgeting, also not repeating the same budget year to year, I'm not saying that's happening. I'm just saying you have to be very careful to make sure that it's intentional about the needs of this year. Like, have we done a complete assessment of what our needs are? And now we intentionally put the money in the right places, but then we carry out that plan, right? So if we get to, and I I say this in my job all the time, if we get to April and the school year ends in June, right? And our our finances, you know, we have rollover funds and all of that, but really the the school budget year, the best way to think is from July first to June thirtieth. But if we're in April and you're coming to me as the school and telling me you want to buy a brand new online program, those kids are only getting two months worth of use out of that program from our, you know, our funding source. But we're also buying it in April, why didn't we not have this conversation in August or June or July or May, like we're doing now to get ready? We need to have a very intentional plan that we know going in, here's where the money is, and not just continually pulling from accounts as if they're just free bank, I'm not free, that's the wrong word, but they're a bank account or a savings account, right? Because that's not how it works. Budgeting is not a, a in and out, it is literally a plan.
All right, so we talking about money. So, uh, apparently they may owe, the school board may owe, they probably do, don't, I don't know, because the answer kind of changes every now and then, depending on what part of the conversation they're having, that they might owe about eighty million dollars to the charter schools. You sure you want to be on this board with them kind of problems?
Well, so let me tell you this, that is concerning, right? It is a concerning number, and I'm not surprised, because in Palm Beach, we face the same issue, right? We, um, we enter, or I can't say we, because I wasn't part of that team, but the district, um, and I don't want to speak on their behalf fully, but my understanding was the district interpreted the referendum language to mean traditional district schools and not charter schools. Long story short, it went through a bunch of legal stuff, they made a, a, um, uh, I think an offer and finally came to a settlement where they were giving the charter schools money, right? So there's no, it's not a big surprise that that happened. Um, I think what the surprise is, is that, uh, the school district in Palm Beach kind of handled that about a year or so back and we're just now kind of finding out, like, that that's, that's the thing here, right? So it is a concern.
When you say we finding out, you mean the public or the school board?
The public.
You're talking about, okay.
I don't know about you, but I'd never heard anything about us owing, owing back money to charter schools until a few weeks ago, right? But I, I do not know, because we're not part of those meetings, right? We're not part of those closed door meetings. I don't know who knew what and what, who didn't know what, right? All I know is that stepping into it from the outside, I'm not tons surprised, but I'm, I'm optimistically cautious, if that makes sense. Because we will have to give by the rules, by the way things are, unless another court case is successful, which I don't know, you know, their plans. I haven't spoken to anyone about that. Um, that that fair share will have to go to the charter schools, right? That's a lot of money to be coming out of the budget. Um, however, I will say, um, there are some charter schools, not all, that some charter schools that do a great job, right? And we need, we need to remember the students in those charter schools, whether we agree with charters or not, are still our students. And so when it comes down to that, I want to look at that and say, okay, let's make sure we're giving the the equitable amount to this, to the charter schools and it's done right. But let's also, like, this isn't about, let's just fix the problem and move on. This to me is an issue of, that I'm hoping, and, you know, I know enough people that I think this is happening, that they sit down together or even at board meetings or, you know, in their own minds reflecting, how can we fix this process so that we're not in a, in a place again that, um, is uncomfortable like this, right? They're always gonna have uncomfortable positions, but the question here is, what brought us here? And maybe it's natural, listen, we're not in those closed door sessions, I have no idea, right? But I will tell you, just on the outside, that eighty million is a huge, it makes my heart stop. Um, but I think what we have to do at this point is we have to be brave, we're gonna have to lean into some very tough conversations. And we have to do what's right, because we have to follow the law, but then we also have to say, look, even though we're in hard times and things are difficult, we have all of these other, I think now two hundred and thirty six thousand, I can't remember what the latest number was, students and children that are relying on us. So we could sit and lick our wounds about the eighty million and it's a lot. But what we really need to do is let's work together to fix it and let's stay focused on those, on every one of those students that is relying on us to ensure their learning. Um, and I think that that's the best way to approach that.
So, and I have, I have a child in charter and I have a child in public, so listen, I, I'm a child in both. So I don't, I'm not saying I'm for one, whatever your position, people's positions on it, on that, it is, you gotta do what's best for your kid. I have one in charter, one in public, and that's where they need to be. All right, so where, so you, you said eighty million dollars gonna hurt, right? They also voted to, um, add metal detectors to some schools. And I believe, um, board member fam put out something that talks about like, they said this is what it's gonna cost, but it's what it's really gonna cost is like some hundreds of millions of dollars or something like that. What's your, what's your thought on the metal detectors? And then if you do think they should be in there, how, how does that get paid for?
So that's such a hard question, um, for many ways, but, um, I haven't, I saw online that board member fam had posted some, I didn't have a chance to read it. And so I don't, I can't, I don't really know all of the ins and outs there. What I will say is, um, I, um, I am concerned to the level of we're now in a place that we're having to make a hard decision about security because of money, right? This is, this is challenging. So if we aren't able to afford it and something happens, right? Then it's this, this place of, where do we lay blame? I, although I hate to use that word, but also, is it okay for us to have this gap, knowing that it could cause harm to children? Um, or do we have a plan that we can lean back on, right? I really feel like there have been a number of instances here lately that we have seen weapons at school, that we have seen, um, uh, issues happening within school parking lots, ride out of a school that we, it was clear that a weapon made its way on the campus, right? Um, one weapon is enough to be, to be worried about. I don't care what it is, it's enough to be concerned. So I, um, I, when I heard about, um, the metal detectors, was glad that we were doing something to try to curb this, right? I don't know that metal detectors are the end all be all, we've still got to change the culture, um, in our schools. But I, I worry, because I can sit here and say all day, yeah, metal detectors are the answer. But now we're gonna be in a position where we're talking about a number of issues at one time, closing schools, charter school money coming, if, if, if they're to be closed, right? I want to be clear, no one said they will, um, and how that will happen. Um, closing schools, charter school money, the money for metal detectors and all of this going on. And let's not forget, our core business, our chief business is instruction, teaching and learning. And if we're focusing all of our money on stuff that is not teaching and learning, this is where the rub is, we're not really doing what our core business is, but you also understand, and I know you do, as as someone who's very active, that the safety of our students is the backbone and the support that ensures that good teaching and learning happens. So it's gonna be a very hard conversation and numbers of conversations that occur around this. Um, and I will say, I look forward to those conversations, I want to be a part and I want to, I want to help that solution, but they do make me very uncomfortable, because no matter what we do, unless we find some kind of pie in the sky or some kind of, um, uh, golden, golden eggs, so to speak, we're gonna be at a place where we're having to, um, make decisions that are limited. Does that make sense? Where it's kind of like, we're gonna give metal detectors, but at this, at this limit, or we're gonna give instruction, but at this limit. And our kids, a- as optimistic as this sounds and, you know, no, no limits, our kids deserve the very, very best and everything we can give them. And I think we're gonna be in a place where we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions that hurt. And we're gonna have to make sure as we move forward, that we're planning and building ourselves to never be in that place again.
And I, and I like to say, I like that you saying you think they're gonna be in a place where they gotta make some tough decisions. They in a place where they gonna have to make some tough decisions, Chris. And one of the other things, they also agreed to some teacher raises too. So we got metal detectors, teacher raises, eighty million dollars to the, you know, charter schools.
It, it's a lot, and, and listen, I, I'll, I'll be the first to say, it's a lot that, um, that we have, um, kind of encumbered ourselves to, or pre-encumbered ourselves to. Uh, you know, I'll say, when we look at issues like raises, you know, we've kind of talked about this a little earlier. I think we need to go back and think about how we do raises. I absolutely one thousand percent believe, and I will never, and I've ma- I've made this comment publicly, our teachers deserve a raise, they absolutely one million percent deserve a raise, I will never say they don't, they work their tails off. But I think every single employee as well, um, and every single group deserves a raise. I know we had one group that got a pretty substantial raise this year, that's great, they deserved it, you know, that they need it. But when we're in a place now of making decisions of, well, this group gets a raise, this group doesn't, maybe our process for how we do raises is kind of skewed, right? Maybe we need to kind of come back and talk about raises collectively, um, or not necessarily collectively, that's not the right word, but in the same timeframe, so that we are not having to deny one group a raise because we gave the other group a raise. That's just not fair to colleagues, right? Um, so I say that to say, yeah, we've got some, some tough commitments that we've made. Um, I, I think that we have to, we're gonna have to step back a little bit, um, and balance all of that. Like, I, I will never tell you, as hard as this is, does a teacher's ability to put food on their table worth less than getting a metal detector? That's the hardest question, like, I don't mean that in a negative, that's a hard question, right? I want those teachers to be able to put everything on their tables they can and to have great homes, and I want our kids to have metal detectors. I have no idea what that answer is right now. And I think that's just, that's where the piece of collaboration and coming together comes into play. Um, we're committed to those teacher raises, um, by board vote and, um, you know, that will come out of the budget. And, um, you know, I, there, there's, uh, been back and forth on those conversations there, right? Um, I will say, no matter where you stand, that I do believe that those teachers one thousand percent deserve a raise. Um, do we have the mechanism to get there? I can't really make the decision on that, because I haven't sat down and looked at those figures behind closed doors with them.
All right, so Cynthia Alcia's asked, she was like, uh, what do you think about closing the KC Wright Building and putting the staff members closer to the, to their assigned work as one of the ways to save some money, I guess?
So, you know, this is an interesting point, we've had a lot of conversation about closing buildings, right? And I think that something we have to think about is, we have made the assumption that closing a building is automatically a huge money saver, right? But that's really not the number one, I'm working on budgeting, I can tell you, your number one expense is personnel, always. Personnel and benefits, always your number one expense. So if we were to close K C W, that doesn't mean that those employees go away, they just move somewhere else, right? Maybe we would get money from the building for selling it, but that's a one time, um, purchase or one time, um, revenue that comes in that we don't get again. So unless we've built some capacity to continue having revenue, we're just finding ourselves overcoming a shortfall one time, not, not in full term. Um, I'm not saying that we're not over, um, that we don't, we couldn't use our buildings in a more smarter, pardon me, manner, we absolutely can. Um, but I think that we have to really think about why a building would close and and really measure how much money it saves us. This is a question I've been asking. If my daughter's school down the road gets closed tomorrow, those teachers are going to be reassigned to other schools, right? And that's what we would expect, because they're on contract. Um, but my question gets us to, um, and Cynthia, I, I do, I don't disagree with you. Um, I, I think that you're right. Um, I, uh, pardon me, I'm just saying that I think that whenever we're closing a school building, I want to know how much money are we really saving? Because we're pulling the personnel out, but putting them somewhere else, so that's really not the savings. What does the savings and revenue look like? And when it comes to school buildings, first of all, I really am not a proponent of selling one, I'm, I'm concerned about that, because we're gonna need them. Um, when it comes to K C W, however, I think that we need to really have a full cost analysis of, you know, Cynthia, and maybe it will get us to eighty million dollars. Um, this is gonna sound, um, uh, uh, trite, and I don't mean it that way. I have no idea what that building is worth, I have no idea what the land would be worth. Um, but I think we just really have to have a hard conversation about where it would get us, you know, um, and, and what the cost benefit would be.
Yeah, so it's in downtown for a lot of deals, so that might, that's, that's a plus, plus, plus right there.
And on the external, it is a very nice building externally, you know, it is, it's, yeah.
Yeah, so, so until the day that they were having those conversations about building closes, there was county commissioners, maz, people from all these different cities. And they were like, listen, we ready to buy it, we ready to lease it, when, when y'all want to let it go? So I think if they do decide to start having sales of buildings or lease out buildings, getting someone to buy it, take it over, lease it, whatever, is not gonna be, is, I don't think that's gonna be hard at all. And there was actually one, um, guy, uh, person that was there, he was from a Jewish school, and he said they were actually looking for some space to rent out a building to expand their school. So, you know, I like, if, and again, so they do have to think, like you said, what's the cost benefit analysis of that? How much money is that gonna bring them, is that gonna solve any of their problems? But I really don't think if they do decide to start unloading buildings, however, they decide to do that, I don't see a problem, even the ones that got mold in them.
Right, and I wonder, I, I think that keeping possession of them and then, and then leasing them is probably a much better option than selling them, because we will need them again at some point, like, let's be honest, things are gonna turn back around, we're gonna need them at some point. Um, and I think we need to think that, that piece through. However, um, I, um, you know, I think that we have to just really think about what unused spaces we have, right? And, and what that looks like, um, and what it means for communities. Um, the last thing we wanted to be doing is destroying a community. I just spoke to my commissioner the other day, um, who it really, one of the kindest hearted community, involved people and really cares about this community, who made a statement to me, um, and, and basically just said, listen, um, you know, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but it was pretty much the degree of, you know, I want to ensure that we have all of our buildings available for children. It would be great for, you know, for extra space for, for city activities and whatever. But the number one thing is our children need, uh, places to learn, and that should be the number one focus. And I just thought that that was so telling of, um, a lot of commissioners and city leaders that I've spoken with, not just within my city, but others, same type of feelings, they don't want to see any buildings close, but they also, um, you know, will be willing to, to, to lease buildings of. same type of feeling, they don't want to see any buildings closed, but they also, um, you know, will be willing to, to, to lease buildings if so. So I don't know that that's the answer, um, but I think that the number one thing is that our focus should be upon ensuring that students have an equality place to learn. Like, you know, those, many of those buildings are filled with mold and filled with uh dilapidated, uh, some of them have brand new construction, some have construction that hasn't happened in twenty years, that needs to be looked at as well for our kiddos.
Yeah, so one, so one of the, um, Carla Michelle says, like, does that mean that they're gonna minimize number of board members if they start closing schools?
I don't think it would. Um, I think from what I know by the legislate, by legislative law, is that our um, our, from what I understand, I could be wrong, but that our board is comprised based upon our um, our, the size of our student bodies and our population. So remember, although we're decreasing schools, we're not decreasing what would be called FTE students. I mean, we're also not decreasing the size of our community, right? I think that that would, what would change, that would be a census change uh within our community, um, which we haven't seen, um, a huge, huge change, knock on wood. Um, I think that if those numbers can stay stable, we'll still have the amount of equitable representation we have now.
All right, all right, so tell people how they can get in touch with you, Chris. I think we touched, oh, no, oh, no, I'm sorry. I got one more last question, and if you don't wanna answer, that's okay too. Um, so the person who's sitting in the district one seat at this moment has asked for um the firing, I think, without cause of the attorney.
I read that.
Batista, because of the way that whole, one of the reasons is because of the whole charter school situation was handled. Do you have any opinions on that?
So, you know, a- a- as I've said earlier, firing someone is always a very difficult decision. Um, I, again, I've not been behind closed doors with them, right? So I don't know what that decision will be, and I also don't know, I haven't spoken to um the representative in district one as to his whole rationale. We can read what we see in the, in the, pardon me, the board minutes, but there's always more, right? I don't, I mean that respectfully, there's always a, a bigger tale um that, that goes there. Um, what I would say is, my concern is that we tend to have a history of removing someone and then equating the removal of that person to the removal of the problem, right? This one person is not the problem, and I don't mean that to be cruel or critical. The problem is a culture or a processes even, that have gotten us to this place where some people don't know, you know, all the information that they need to know or that they, that they would have liked to know. Um, some people have withheld information, um, some people just didn't even know they needed to share the information, right? So if we get rid of one person, that's not
How you don't know, what you got this whole big job with this whole big all this money and you don't know, I don't understand how, how I didn't know gets to be uh explanation.
I think sometimes people stand in the way of, of information, um, and sometimes it's easy, I won't go there. But I, I think that that's, some people can be ga- can be gatekeepers of information, right? And that can be, it's a very powerful place, but a very dangerous place. I will say that um as we are moving forward, that we need to understand this one person, getting rid of them, it does not solve the problem. We need to solve this problem and solve the process so that as we move forward, none of our board members are ever placed in it, in the situation again. I really truly do believe that our board members are, um, especially those that have been serving for a long time, are there because they care about kids and care about our community. I absolutely have to believe that. Um, and I feel like um I want to see them protected, and the best way to protect them and all of our children is to ensure internal controls and some processes are in place not to get us here. So we've got to ensure that it's not just, oh, we'll get rid of this person, the problem goes away. No, if you do that, that's whatever decisions they make based upon their own, that's their employee. Um, that's up to them, but I think they also should have a focus on what are we doing to solve these problems as we move forward? Um, because as you know, people come and go, and if you base a culture off of one person, that one person, when they come and go, either makes or destroys the, the ship, so to speak, right? So I, my hope would be that we're gonna have conversations um about uh this, this situation, right? And that there's going to be some internal controls and some things put in place. For instance, I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't know if, if in closed door sessions, the general counsel has an agenda that she goes through and shares reports on certain items, but if, as a leader, when I have people that report to me, there are things that stand on an agenda that we, every few weeks, we're gonna come back to, fill me in on this, where are we with this, where are we with this? If that's not happening, that should be happening, right? Um, if it, and there needs to be an in-depth conversation about that.
Yeah, so, but the chat saying she need to get fired, Chris, I'm not, don't, don't say that, I'm not telling you to say that, but all them people like, mm-mm, she gotta go. I'm so sorry, but she got to go.
Well, and I see this, I see Miss Grace saying, um, you wouldn't have uh much vote, she's been there for a while, it needs to be fired with cause. So here's the thing, I don't
And say she gotta go too, Tom's like, my lady.
Yeah, I don't think, here's the thing, I can't say, yeah, we absolutely have to fire. Um, but I can't say no. I, I think that, that there are just conversations that each of those board members have had with her behind closed doors, right? That those are the things that need to be driving this. I, if I find an employee that they mess up once, twice, three times, we're gonna have conversations, right? By the fifth, sixth time, we'll probably let them go, but at the end of the day
No, Chris, eighty million dollars, sometimes you don't get no second chances if you give me an eighty million dollar problem, I'm sorry.
I think we have to get to, like, I, before I make a decision, I have to know what those conversations were like with her, right?
Yeah.
If this is off guard and it's just been like, no one's really said much about it, then, yeah. But if, if this has been addressed multiple times and it's still going, then at some point you have to make a decision to say, this isn't, you're an attorney, you know this, right? Um, I've had, not issues, but I've had
As an attorney, it's like, there's sometimes there's no second chances.
You can't repeat it, right?
You, you, you don't, you, you, you mess up, that's it, you don't get
I would say represent us with just buying property, right? That I've said, oh, this isn't a fit, it's not personal at that place, it just wasn't a fit, right? And if that's the case, great, fine. Um, it's not, to me, it doesn't come down to just her firing, I think we're, we're focusing on the wrong issue. The issue is, what are we gonna do to fix the problem? And if the problem is that part of that is we need to find a different counsel, understood and agreed. But let's not just stop at this one person's hiring or firing and place all our decisions there. There's a bigger issue that needs to be addressed, not, not throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Absolutely, absolutely, got that. So, all right, thank you so much for your time. So now I need you to tell the people how to find you, how to give you money, how to get the T-shirts so they can volunteer for you cuz I know you gotta go canvassing, you got all this stuff you need to do. I don't know if you're doing phone banking, texting, all of this stuff. So I suspect you might need some volunteers and you might need some dough.
Yeah, so we um, we uh have, uh, need as much help as possible. Uh, my um email address is um chris@votechriscantor.com.
Chris.
Uh, at votechriscantor. My cell number is seven five four three zero 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 six five seven.
Wait, hold on, so some, wait, something happened.
You're fine.
Yeah, seven five four three zero
Three zero zero, zero six five seven.
Zero six five seven.
Yeah, um, and then um you can call, email me, check out the website um at www.votchriscantor.com. Listen, I wanna hear your concerns, I wanna know where we are. We're all gonna be at different places with a lot of what's going on, right? Um, I can tell you, based upon conversations, this is how I feel, but just because I feel one way doesn't mean that's necessarily what we're, what the decision is that needs to be made. That's why we all have to talk, right? We all have to have those conversations about, you know, I know you're approaching it from this point of view, I wanna share mine. And so I think it's very vital, um, and, oh, you're welcome, Latricia, thank you. Um, call me, reach out to me, let me know. Listen, if you're having an issue in your neighborhood and you're like, hey, I just want some thoughts, I love to talk about that stuff with our neighbors. Um, and as a PTA leader, it's been all about empowering parents to move us forward, right? Um, and to, to move our kids forward. So I wanna say thank you, um, and thanks Cynthia, I will try. Uh, many of you know me personally and have sat with community committees, um, you know how I am, I'll speak my mind, but I'll also hear where you are. And um, we can sit down and have a cold glass of Coca-Cola and discuss the situations and laugh by the time we're done.
Okay, so, so we, we, we're trying to break up with sugar, Chris, so I'm trying to have no Coca-Cola with you.
Actually, you know what?
Carla Michelle is like, she's in a toxic relationship with Coke, and I'm over here, I'm trying to break up with sugar, so we might need to have some unsweetened tea.
Crystal Light or unsweetened tea. Well, you know, I'm, I'm an Atlantan, I'm a southern boy, so I don't know if I can do unsweetened tea. We'll see, you know what, we, we, we get together and um, I appreciate you.
He said he's a Pepsi guy. Break up with sugar, all right, I'm just telling you.
Uh, Mr. Vasquez commented in, Cafe Cito, I love it, and, and Tori as well. Um, I will say, being an Atlantan, you know, I'm always gonna go to Coke cuz that's the Coke factories there, um, at Coke, uh, but you know what? Whatever we, whatever we wanna drink, I think that it's, it's so important we have these conversations, all of us. And look, we're gonna be on different sides of the aisle and that's fine. I think that we just have to come to a place where we say, what's right, let's talk about it and let's decide, um, you know, and let's uh ensure that we're doing what's best for our kiddos. Amy says, don't go to Costco and get the Reese's
Go to Costco, you go to Costco, you're gonna They have everything.
The fact that she mentioned Reese's frozen chocolate banana slices specifically, she was tempting us.
Yeah, we trying to break up, it's, it's gonna be, it's, it's tough, it's hard, it's hard, it's hard.
Absolutely.
It's hard. Yeah, so I'll have the Cafe Cito with like, but I'm gonna have it with no sugar and I gotta have it early in the morning cuz if I have it in the afternoon, I won't sleep for like a day.
Mine is colada, if you can make me a colada early in the morning and I have that, I'm good to go. Um, and it's, but I know it's loaded in sugar, I didn't realize that until the other day, that is loaded.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is. All right, thank you so much, everybody. Go to the website, um, votechriscantor.com, email is chris@votechriscantor.com. His phone number is seven five four three hundred zero six five seven, he wants to hear from you because, you know, though, he told us about what it is that he wanna do, but from conversation with people in the community, he may realize that there's some more things that he needs to know about, right? So definitely get involved, stay engaged, and thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
I appreciate you, have a great week.
You too.